Called order, the Tuesday, September 26th, meeting of the Dayton City Council stands for the pledge. The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under your God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we need a motion in a second for the agenda.
All motion. No second.
Okay, we have. Any changes?
Yes, I have one tonight. Mayor and council would like to add item L to the end of the agenda for an approval of letter of support for the 2040 Transportation Policy Plan Amendment. That should be in front of you today. We received that from the identity for coalition and it's just a letter of support for us. Add that to the last item, item L, it should be pretty quick.
Thank you.
I'd like to add an item about attendance requirements for both council and committees, please. I think it'll be a quick item.
M then?
Sure.
Okay. Okay. Any other discussion? All right, we've got a motion in a second for the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Unanimous four to zero. Consent? I need a motion in a second.
All motion.
All second.
Okay, any discussion?
I have a couple of quick questions on item B, payment of claims. I didn't have a chance to email you, but there's a $12,000 payment for H&amp;L Masabi. Not familiar with who that might be.
H&amp;L Masabi is that you, Chief Hendrickson?
It's not. It says Street Maintenance and Repairs and Charge of Public Works.
Let me see if I can do some research.
Okay. And then the second one I had was a payment, $46,000 to S.R. Widoma for wellhead treatment.
Yes.
And what work are they doing on that project?
So they are extending, so Jason Quizer could probably go into more detail if you want to know more information, but as part of the Riverwalk Second Edition, they had planned on doing extensions on both ways, south and north, and they switched that to being just the south half of Riverwalk. So we needed to have them extend the pipe. They extended the pipe just far enough for us to be able to use sewer and then looping raw water line for that wellhead treatment plant. So as part of the wellhead treatment plant, they have to dump sewage out the bottom once the, all this stuff comes out of the water and goes into the sewer pipe. Well, there's no sewer pipe anywhere near there. And as part of that project, they, that's where the $46,000 came from, is that's an extension to Riverwalk. And since S.R. Widoma was doing the project already, it was significantly cheaper to have them do it instead of bidding it out separately. I don't know if there's any more information that you have, Jason, than that, but.
So is this an add to the project or that was envisioned?
Nope, it had to be done either which way. And so because of the way it was designed from Black and Beach, we had no sewer line to get there. And so you either had to bid it separately as a separate project or just have the cheapest option go forward, which is S.R. Widoma, who was doing the project already sitting there. So we had to do it either which way, it's just what can we get the cheapest? So it's a looping raw water line to get additional capacity so if we could shut off one side and the other side to make sure that everyone sells water and then be able to flush the system at the bottom.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else have anything? Right. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Unanimous four to zero. Open forum. Do we have anybody here for open forum? Come on forward. For non-agenda items, limited to three minutes, state your name and address, no council action will be taken, and items will be referred back to staff.
Hi, my name is Mark Jorgens. Do we need my address?
Yep.
6447 West Chester Circle, Gold Valley, Minnesota.
Okay. Great, you've got three minutes.
All right, again, I'm Mark Jorgens. I have done this more than once. I've probably done about a billion and a half dollars with the real estate transactions and I'm partnering with Brad Langerman, who owns four acre, 40 acres, I'm sorry, on Diamond Lake, which we want to develop. We're proposing to build 50 to 60 custom luxury homes along this lakefront property that includes community open space and retention ponds, which obviously will all, you know, all be included in the requirements by, you know, everybody. Brad, in addition, will build his own retirement home here as well, so he's personally committed to making this a beautiful and successful community. Mr. Langerman and I will develop the project's infrastructure and a custom home builder we have partnered with will build the homes on individual half acre lots. Most will be lakefront property. The average selling price is estimated to be about $2 million. That is, of course, subject to change. Our development will bring water and sewer from the town of Rogers to service our development at our own expense. Rogers has already indicated this is a possibility. Our development obviously will pay for the cost of these extensions. While costly, the home prices of lakefront properties support this extension. The high value of the home, of the lakefront properties allow us to do this. Other types of development outside of lakefront would not, as those home prices would not be justifiable to the expense of developing the water and the sewer extensions. We believe that the town of Dayton will realize about $2.4 million in additional real estate taxes based upon these home values. The development and the infrastructure extensions will raise property values of surrounding homes and land. The water and sewer expansion could potentially facilitate development in the future. However, that would be subject to your and Rogers' approval. I have spoken to many of you, the mayor, the Met Council individually. I did this hoping to clarify the community's needs and concern. Again, I've done many of these and this is how it's done. As I addressed everyone in earlier emails, this development won't open floodgates of development simply because standard home prices won't support the cost of developing water and sewer as lakefront properties will. While I respect future long-range planning, these projections that can and should be adjusted as needs and opportunities arise. I would like to move forward to find the best way to cooperate with both the town of Dayton and Rogers, and this begins by me speaking here tonight. Therefore, the process moving forward needs to be clarified. Sort of in contrast to what you guys have been told, the, because it's physically impossible, the first thing that needs to happen is the city of Dayton needs to recommend this to the city of Rogers. We then go to the city of Rogers and their council approves it and we work with them and Met Council on the exact water and sewer conditions. We then bring those things back to you guys for your approval. These sides have believed in their mind that they're doing the best interest of everybody and possible, and that includes you guys. Let me state that again. We are working in the best interest of all parties. With our help, Dayton is able to create a development this size and quality which you guys couldn't do on your own. Overall, this development is simply a straightforward plan. Its main complexity is water and sewer, which is readily addressed at our cost, by the way, by tapping into the infrastructure already available from Rogers. I look forward to working on this and getting your approval, and I know that it should be a boon for this town.
All right, thank you. Anybody else for open forum? Anybody online?
So if anyone's online for open forum, if you can use the raise your hand function. No, I don't have anyone.
All right. So move on to staff, consultant, council updates, yeah?
Yes, good evening, mayor and members of council. I've several updates tonight. Sorry, I'm going to try to make it as quick as possible. Your update that I was looking into was the H&amp;L Masabi question that you had. It is for 35 snowplow blades. So that's what that is for. So that's our contractor for that. We received an email this morning about the sign ordinance and revisiting this item from a member of the planning commission. Is this something that the city council wants to pursue still? We had a discussion at a few meetings ago, but didn't get quite clear direction because it was such a muddled mess last time and weren't sure what the process to get this cleaned up was, so.
Is their concern, changes or adding capacity or adding?
Adding more requirements, basically, or making it more difficult to put signs up? Was there?
Oh, sorry. I thought you were referring to the?
Sign ordinance.
The real sign ordinance, the big beast.
The advertisement ones you're saying?
You're talking about?
Like the big ones you said on, okay.
He did mention that other cities have something?
Yeah, like I said, the answer is to adjust the sign ordinance. That's the answer. It's separate, takes a public hearing and a process to do it. And so city staff needs either need its direction to either do that process or to not do the process, because if we need to update the sign ordinance, which we did once, or should have corrected or updated or whatever, it was a bit of a painstaking process. We need to figure out if that's worth going through, and if there's more things to update, yes or no, we don't want to spend a bunch of time on it as staff.
No, neither do we. We spent way too long on it last time. So do we have examples that you're aware of?
I'm sure we can get some from other cities.
Okay. Personally, I am, but.
I'd be in favor of that, too.
I also, is that something staff would take or the planning commission would work through? What does that look like from your side?
Well, we have to have the public, so we'll look through it, get some examples or whatever from other cities, adjust what we think is needed based on what comments we've heard back. If you have anything specific you'd like to discuss with the sign ordinance, please email me and then we can get that through. We'll have John and Tori take a look at that, our planning department, and then bring that back to planning commission for the public hearing and then bring it to council for approval.
As a part of that, where you look at the, if you call them signs or billboards on Dayton Road, as you head westbound or eastbound, there's like those ones, there's a bunch of them, one of them got blown over recently in the storms, they're?
Sure. We could look at those as well.
Eight feet by 12 feet or something like that, they're pretty significant.
If you have anything specific like that, just give us an email. Send John an email too.
Yeah, so just real specific, what specific types of signs, like, you know, you're mentioning billboards and I'm thinking like freeway billboards, so.
No, if you drive down Dayton Road, you'll see them.
Signs along the road.
They're giant signs along the road.
Like the River Hills and the advertisements for the developments.
Yeah, they're huge. They're like four by four into the ground a lot of the times, so they're pretty substantial. And then the other signs, I think, were everything from, I think an example that was emailed to us was parade of home signs, and then there's like Jet Black, Joe John's, gutters, whatever it comes down to.
House washing, these ones, those small little advertisement ones?
And they end up on busy corners. Unfortunately, all those busy corners, I think, are also the corners that we have a lot of accidents at. And so if it's causing, if there's any opportunity for it to cause issues with sight, I think that's a big concern, for me at least.
So specifically, it's roadside signs, not?
In public right of way.
Correct.
Okay. If there's anything additional, please let us know.
Yeah, if someone wants to put a Jet Black sign in their own yard, I have no problem with that, but I think the corners in public right of ways is kind of my concern.
Okay, we'll take that direction and move forward. I'll be out the rest of the week attending a conference in Alexandria. If there's anything, please get in touch with Amy or any of the department heads who have what you need. Next week, I begin a process of a year-long program for stepping into leadership, which is put on by MMUA. I look forward to diving into this program to improve not only myself as a leader moving forward, but also bring those things back to our city and help department heads become better leaders as well from what I learned there. So it'll be a year-long program and I'm not sure exactly what the process will be, but we'll learn next week. And then lastly, at the EDA meeting last week, the EDA voted to recommend to the council looking into detachment from Hennepin County. I'm bringing this to you as an update from the EDA and trying to figure out if we'd like to have some sort of discussion tonight or more direction at a further meeting of what to move forward with. This is all stemming from conversations happening at city of Champlin.
Has Champlin contacted?
Nothing.
Okay. I certainly would like to explore it. My guess is that the hill's going to be pretty high to get over, so, but there may be a couple, at least avenues to look at, but I know at the last northwest, the mayor's league dinner that I go to, every, every city, I think there was like 12 or so there, was chomping at the bit for something like this. So I think there could be a lot more horsepower if we started to churn this thing. Kevin happened to be sitting right next to me, too, so he, but I would be certainly at least open to looking at it. And to just see, see if there's any, you know, any way to get over that hill or to, you know, find other avenues, so.
Yeah, I'm also interested in exploring it. The little bit of research that I've done, you know, it looks like a pretty high hill to climb and we would need to partner with multiple other communities to get anywhere near the numbers that I think it's going to take to get it on a ballot, but I'd like to understand that further.
Well, city attorney Amy Schmidt is here tonight, so she'll take some direction and look into it, get back to us what it takes.
I think Champlin has done some work to figure out what it takes. I don't know if their, I believe their attorney looked at it, but.
Part of me wants, I think it's worth looking at, but part of me says become a Champlin, do all the legwork on it, pay all the costs into doing it all, and then we can look at what they have, and then have Amy look at it, and that might save the city some money and some time. And maybe they'll find some pitfalls along the way that we can learn from. So I'm open to looking at now, but I think there might also be benefit to waiting to see what they learn first and then looking at it afterwards, we don't have to reinvent or invent the wheel on this one. That's my thought initially at least. But I definitely think it's worth exploring at some point.
Mayor, members of the council, for what it's worth, I have reviewed the memo that the attorney for the city of Champlin put together. And honestly, from a legal research standpoint, looking at the statutes and all of that, the state constitution, I'm not sure there's really any legal analysis that I can really add to that. It's, what he prepared is quite thorough. I mean, I think if the direction that you would give me is, you know, I could, you know, talk with their attorney, I think, like you said, mayor, this is going to take a lot of, or one of the other council members said, it's going to take a little coordination. I don't know that it would be really productive to have Champlin look at it on their own and then follow suit, because I think, I don't think, based on what the statutes and the different avenues that might be available, I don't think it's something that could really happen independently.
Correct.
It would be more effective to do it if you had a larger group.
And I'm certainly not going to speak for them, but I'm pretty sure we could get a much larger group, so.
It seems like that's what, and I'm not sure what the process would look like, but by my math, we would need 190,000 signatures on the petition to Hennepin County. I don't know what it would be for right or no good, depending on the direction we want to flee. So clearly in my mind, if everybody in Dayton was for it, you know, we're 5% there. So it's going to be, have to be a northwest suburbs kind of a coalition, and I don't know what it takes to initiate that conversation. You know, maybe more, more important that to see what level of interest there is around than researching the statute, which seems to have already been done.
Right. I wouldn't want to, like you said, reinvent the wheel. It's, there's, it is a very difficult legal test to get over.
You know, I don't want to, we probably shouldn't sit and hammer on this too much here, but it would also, to me, seem like a good idea to explore, looking at legal challenges to the process, because I fail to get how Hennepin County can keep us from associating with another county. I don't know, you know, everything that, you know, the powers that the county has. My understanding is the counties exist for the cities, not the other way around, but I don't know that. And I don't know, you know, if there's, I don't know, so that's.
That would, that would be a different?
It would be a different take.
Legal avenue that I could look into for you if you, if you really would like that.
I would.
I wouldn't even know where to start on it. I mean, trying to give somebody direction, I'm like, I don't even know where you go. Good?
Yep. That's all I got, thanks.
I was just going to reiterate, it is, it is a very difficult need to accomplish. I'm going to give false impressions that it's, that it's easy.
Anything else? Nope. Amy?
My updates are shorter.
Wow.
We did create business cards, so if any of you would like that, I just need the information that you would like on those. So what, meaning what phone number you want, if a phone number or email, obviously we can include your city email, but. And then we have had one more application for the recreation position, and then we've had one more application for the planning commission as well. So I will forward that information on to you when that closes. So if there's anyone else that is interested, October 3rd is the deadline. I was expecting more than one for, you know, extending it, so hopefully they get those applications in.
Thank you.
Chief?
Good evening, mayor, members of council. Tomorrow evening kicks off the 2024 Northwest Urban Fire Academy with EMT, so that'll start tomorrow. That's all I have for updates.
Evening, mayor, members of council. Just a reminder, it's homecoming week, so we'll have extra patrols on tonight, hopefully deter some of the vandalism. Call 911 if you see anything suspicious.
Jason? John?
I've already been talking to you, I should probably introduce myself to you. I'm Amy Schmidt, I'm from the Campbell Knutson Law Firm. Our office is in Eagan, but we represent cities all across the metro and beyond. I've only been with the firm since May 1st, but I have a long history and practice of municipal law. I've been, most recently, I was in the Civil Division with the Ramsey County Attorney's Office, which was a little bit different, because up to that point, I'd only ever worked for cities, the city of Bloomington, and then other, a couple of other law firms that represent a lot of cities and businesses throughout the metro and beyond. I don't know if you have specific questions for me, but I'm always happy to answer. Zach and I, and Amy and I have been kind of in touch on a few things and other staff, the two chiefs, we have some ordinance stuff that we've been working on, so I've kind of taken a deep dive from the very start. So I'm happy to be here and I'm glad to finally get to meet all of you. I've been saying to Zach, you know, maybe I should meet the council sometime, since we didn't do a formal interview, it didn't get to introduce myself to you that way, so. And it's not just me at Campbell Knutson, there are 16 other attorneys, and all of us have, you know, a range of experience from 30-plus years down to associates who have just a couple, three, four, five years, who are kind of, even though I'm new to the firm, I still kind of think of myself as one of the old, you know, the old dogs who can help bring along the next generation of municipal lawyers. It's a, municipal practice is, it's kind of a calling, you know? You don't get into a municipal practice to become a rich lawyer who, you know, lives in a $2 million home. You know, it's truly a calling to help communities make their own communities a better place to be for everybody.
Thank you.
If you have questions for me, I'm happy to answer them, but that's me kind of in a nutshell. I live in Woodbury, that, you know, I have a husband, two kids, my second kid just started college this fall, so it's kind of, I'm adjusting to being an empty nester.
Okay. Well, thank you.
I'm glad to be here.
Thank you.
Travis?
Nothing for me.
I got nothing.
I had one quick thing. I took a look at the city's new app, and either my, I'm off, or this is off, but we have three council meetings in October, on the 3rd, the 17th, and the 31st. So either I need to adjust my calendar or those days need to be adjusted.
That's incorrect.
The app looked good. I hope people use it.
Yeah, we'll continue to have refinements on that to make sure it gets better and better as we get along, so if you see anything or anything like that, just let us know and we're happy to adjust it. Still a work in progress, obviously, so thank you very much.
That's all I have.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you to the fire department for their introduce a firefighter that they're doing on Facebook. It's kind of nice to meet the firefighter and understand what made them join. Hopefully it lets others in the community understand who these people are, they're members of our community or neighboring communities, and they have a passion for doing the right thing, so thank you for that. And then I think there's a fire open house coming up, right, chief?
Mm-hmm.
Thanks for the reminder. Yes, Sunday, October 8th, from 11 until 2 PM, here at Station 2.
That's all I got.
Okay, move on to new business. Item I.
Oh, sorry, that one, yeah, I added. And then I picked the other slide to be up. There wasn't enough slides, so I had to add one.
They're shorter than normal, right? Evening, mayor and council. We, staff has been discussing a potential project on 152nd. We just wanted to bring it in front of council to just talk through the level of improvements that might be considered there, as we have some alternate scopes, if you will, that might be more fitting for the situation, so. And I also want to mention, we did send out notice to the residents on 152nd. I expect there's probably some of them at the meeting tonight to join us, so if there's any input sought from them, they're probably available to speak to that. So just for anybody that might not know, 152nd is located in the far northwest part of the city, as indicated on the drawing here. And just a little bit of information, it's about a quarter mile long road. It's just two lanes serving local residents only. It's a dead-end road, so it doesn't know through connection. Access only to Brockton Lane, serving 12 properties. It's actually, I think, 11 properties with one under construction, so there's the 12th house being built as we speak. The pavement is in poor condition. It's known to have been in poor condition for some time. This project was previously identified on the city CIP and then delayed, actually multiple times, due to budget constraints because of other improvements that took priority over this one. It is identified again currently for 2024 with a budget of $600,000, just a note on that. The $600,000 was intended for a full-depth reclamation, which is grinding up of all of the pavement on the street and then removing of the top layer of gravel and then all-new pavement about that. So I'll go through the other options here as we move forward. So the level of improvements is what's under discussion, so we just wanted to touch base before we proceeded with expending any resources on any specific scope. So as I mentioned, the pavement on the street is, it's really rough. There's, I listed the cracking, so about every type of cracking that could occur has occurred. The good news is there's limited sides of subgrade issues, which means the pavement is staying pretty steady. It's not differentiating like this, which means the underlying soils are holding up fairly well, which is good news. Hence why we're coming before you tonight with a potential alternative solution. And there is no turnaround at the other end, so that's one thing we would like to address with this as well. Right now, I think Public Works is actually using a residential driveway to do the turnaround at the end, so we'd like to get something a little, a little beefier, if you will, to support that movement. So the options that could be considered for this is obvious, there's always the do-nothing option, to, again, delay the project. That would be one for moving forward. A mill and overlay, that's the alternative that we're thinking might be suitable for this, which is just grinding off the top layer of the pavement and putting a new surface on it. The cracks do come back through on that, but it does buy you some life to the pavement, so it will extend the life. So we'd like to get something a little, a little beefier, if you will, to support that movement. So the options that, that could be considered for this is obvious, there's always the do-nothing option, again, delay the project. That would be one for moving forward. A mill and overlay, that's the alternative that we're thinking might be suitable for this, which is just grinding off the top layer of the pavement and putting a new surface on it. The cracks do come back through on that, but it does buy you some life to the pavement. So it will extend the life certainly of that pavement. Or the full-depth reclamation and paving, which is what we currently have in there. That one does get a little bit more life with it, but it also comes with a bigger price take. And I'll get into a little bit more detail on that. And then full reconstruction is always an option too, to be honest. I don't, I don't think we would recommend that at this time, only because I don't think there's a desire to go to an urban section where there'd be curb and gutter. And again, the underlying soils are holding up fairly well, so that would be a much higher cost with probably limited additional benefit. So just things to consider as we put together the project scope is obviously the cost, the anticipated longevity, how much life are you going to get out of the improvements that you do undertake? And then we just wanted to mention and voice that there could be consideration of other improvements in the area, including potential development of the land just to the east. Maybe just for a high level, that's previously the Hilmer Hartman property. There were some donations going, or donation of the land is my understanding. I don't know all of the details of potential school construction on that property. There's also been some expressed interest for other types of development in the area. So the timing of that is certainly unknown. Whether or not it would even be allowed has, has not been decided, but just something to keep in mind when, when considering the improvements on 152nd as the longevity of it might, might need to, or maybe should coordinate with that development at some point.
Have they said anything? The, the, so it looks like Holy Spirit Academy owns it. They contacted the city at all?
They, they've been in a couple times over the years. I would, it's maybe been last late spring?
Yeah, probably late spring this year was last time I chatted with them, probably around May. They are still moving forward. That is, their plan is to move forward with the project. They'd still like to do it. They do have a timeline, so their timeline runs out in 2030. So just keep that in mind for timing is their timeline runs out in 2030. If they do not do anything with the land, it goes back to the trust. That is the timeline given by Hilmer Hartman as well.
Okay. Have they talked about multiple access? Have they talked about a connection to 152nd or?
We haven't, we, we, we talked about options. We haven't locked into anything. It would make, it would make a lot of sense using it just to not introduce yet another access to, to Brockton Lane. The site distance is decent at this location. It'd be challenging to get to where they want to construct from Landale, so coming from the west side does make sense.
That would be their primary entrance?
Potentially.
Oh, I got you. Okay.
And then just the others that would come with that development, maybe even independently of it, but more likely with some sort of development is the, the city's ultimate water tower serving that part of the city is literally at the end of this cul-de-sac, or what will be the cul-de-sac at the dead end, as it's the highest point in the northern part of the cities. So if that were to be constructed, that would probably bring in utilities and the ability to extend services to the properties along 152nd, which could, again, if we put in a substantial improvement and then utilities become available, we wouldn't want to dig up a very expensive new road.
Is there a timeline on that project as far as the water tower? That's a discussion that has to happen later.
It, it would almost certainly come with development is the thought, because that's what would bring them the money to.
But that would be up from the south, right? I mean, they're already kind of limited to Atsigo access.
Sewer.
Sewer.
For sewer. Yeah, they, they have capacity, so it would take, and this kind of opens a whole another discussion. There, there's more capacity at Atsigo. We even have a contract that would allow additional flow to go there. We're limited by the system itself, so it would take an additional river crossing or an upsizing, or possibly both of the existing system to accommodate additional. It's feasible of doing without it extending from the south. The preferred would be to come from the south, because that's the ultimate.
Ripping up everything, right, to at least resize the pipe? An additional river crossing?
It depends on how big of a development's considered. So we have looked at this a little bit. There, there are some incremental improvements with just the lift stations, which means we could utilize the pipes that are in place to allow some development. But again, there, there is a threshold where all the pipes have to get bigger, or a separate crossing, which could also be accomplished.
And we've got the water tower. Do you see with the water tower budget for next year also?
There is currently planned in the CIP some sort of storage for the historic village area. However, it is not the ultimate water tower. It is a temporary water tower. It will be able to serve the current historic village, but not the long-term future of Dayton and that area.
Okay, so that long-term, I mean, the interim step, would that support the school? Or is that require?
It would not support the school.
The, the, the hope would be if the school came, that could help fund the ultimate tower, as they would not have to put in the expansive fire suppression system that would otherwise have to be installed.
And we can't put the pipes in the ground unless there's water running through them, is what I'm understanding? Or they collapse, correct? Is that what you're trying to talk?
They could go in. I, I don't think I'd recommend it, to be honest. I don't. I know of a couple situations where that has happened and they filled the pipes later. I, I would recommend avoiding it if possible and not, not installing the pipes until the, it's connected to the system.
And what's the expected life of the mill and overlay?
Actually, next slide. Just to, to try to get, you know, try to quantify these so we can get a handle on what these different improvements would be. The do-nothing option, obviously, there's no cost associated with that, other than the continued and likely increasing maintenance. And if Marty was here, he could attest to that they're actually patching the patches on there at this point. So there is a fair amount of, of maintenance today. The mill and overlay, we have an estimate of about $200,000 on that. I actually think we'll, we'll probably be able to come in under that. It, it, there's not a hard and fast for these things, but we would expect, I mean, the typical mill and overlay, just in the general scheme of the roadway, is about a seven-year extension of the life. You know, because the underlying soils are strong and we do, if that is done and proper maintenance, meaning the cracks are sealed when they appear each year, that could probably be extended beyond that as well. And I'll just make one comparison for a visual, if anybody's familiar with East French Lake Road down on the south end. So once you get closer to territorial, where the territorial trail development exists. So they did an overlay, and I think everybody's probably familiar with East French Lake Road to the north. It's, it's pretty rough shape, maybe comparable to 152nd. They mill and overlayed that, and it was either in 18 or 19. My aerials went from spring 18 to fall 19, so I don't know which year, which year it was done. But that's, that's holding up really well. So we're thinking, you know, realistic to expect similar results here, where a mill and overlay could be a, a good solution. I mean, that's got about seven years on it and it, it's holding up really well with, with only minimal cracking coming through. And then again, the full-depth reclamation, that, that does extend the life longer, because again, you're not, you're not preserving any pavement with cracking. Those cracks do come through. You're actually going with all new, so it further delays any cracking or deterioration of it. So, but also comes with the price take, because it's a lot more pavement going in, so. And then again, the full reconstruction, we wouldn't recommend it at this time. It would just, I don't think there'd be enough added benefit to, for the extra funds. So that was just the discussion item. I just, I just put a, this for discussion purposes, if there was any questions on locations or other.
This, this study we're doing, you don't expect that to add any information to this, right?
It's going to tell us the pavement's poor.
But it's, do they measure any deltas or any jumps or any?
Yeah, it's actually pretty sophisticated material. It all goes into a huge algorithm and spits out an answer. So it's probably not real obvious what's causing the number to be what it is, but it gives an overall rating to, to make it certainly comparable. That will be the nice, a very nice part about having that, is being able to see which are the worst, not, not just.
I feel a little bit handicapped looking at this one kind of in isolation. I mean, I think we can all agree it's bad and it needs, needs to be addressed. But compared to, I mean, where does it sit on the scale of our bad roads that we want to address first? And I don't think we'll know that till we have that pavement study.
Yeah, until the, until that information comes through. I, I will say, I think this one has been back, is before my time. I think it was on the CIP for whenever Public Works and the fire was, or police was built, 2016. And that might not have even been the first time it was put on there. I'm not sure. But it, it has been around, so it's been on everybody's radar that it's considered one of the worst in the city.
Your judgment, though, is, is the mill and overlay, the soils are good, is what you're saying?
They're holding up, they're holding up pretty well. So again, it's kind of a balance. I mean, there will be, there will be more life with the more expensive. But again, especially with having East French Lake Road as kind of a test road, if you will, because it's a similar condition and improvement.
Well, my concern is, is that if we end up, you know, putting in a 20-year road and then we decide in five or 10 years, we're going to rip it up. I mean, right now, I'm almost thinking that the mill and overlay is the.
Timing-wise, it, it makes sense to me as well.
It would be nice to know what this, what the study says, but I think this thing's been getting kicked down the road.
I think where my mind goes with this is, and I'm gonna, I want to agree that something needs to be done with this road. Probably should have been done a while ago, but something needs to be done with the road. It's in bad shape. So what I'm about to say is not to minimize that the road needs to be done. My question is, is if the eventual goal is we're going to have a water tower at the end of this, that water tower is going to need to be there if we want, in my, I believe, in some ways, I'm wrong. If we want to get commercial businesses in the historic village, they need the water pressure for the water suppression. And so if we do the mill and overlay and say, great, in seven years, when this public works, we're done anyway, seven, eight years, that's when we think the water tower will go up, the school, that gives us to the end of the decade. For the school to come in and say they want to do it and raise their funds and so on and so forth, so that all lines up. But in my mind, if, if that's a choice we go forward with, we're also then somewhat handicapping the ability for commercial growth in the historic village, given that they need that pressure in order to have the fire suppression to get it done. I'm not saying it's not possible for the growth, that's what I'm saying. We're handy, we're handicapping, cutting off the knees. So if, if we decide to do, in my mind, there's two options. Either the mill and overlay, or we figure out what it's going to take to get the water tower in, see if we can get the school to partner with us now, get that done next year, and the road done next year with the pipe underneath it and get everything going, knowing that that might help drive commercial in the historic village. Those are the two options. I, I'm not saying one's right or one's wrong. I know one's significantly more expensive than the other, hands down. So I'm not, I'm not, I have no preference one way or the other, I guess, but I just want to make sure that we are understanding that, and maybe, John, you disagree, but that we're, if we don't put the water tower in the next seven years, we're kind of handicapping the, the growth of the historic village from a commercial standpoint, possibly from a residential standpoint, just from a water and the pressure and the tank we have down there was a temporary tank from 20 years ago, so.
I can't really comment too much on the utilities, but the commercials depended on rooftops, and we don't have the rooftops to support that. But I guess one question, if, if we did the mill and overlay, would that be done 2024 at the earliest? Yeah. I mean, we can do it anytime, but the, the expectation is it's constructed in '24.
So those are my thoughts on, on the options in front of us, as I, I put thought into both this road and its impact to the greater community.
I just think that the amount of time between any commercial activity, if it ever happens downtown, and being able to connect a water tower to the historic village system, I think that'll be a while. That's my guess.
Well, we have to deal with the sewer.
Well, pretty much at the other side.
It's the other side of it, yep.
You can't have water and not sewer capacity, and you're still in the same place.
You can do the other way around.
We serve some sewer capacity, so that's the.
Right.
Yeah.
But.
Again, I have no preference. This is just the, I was looking at what I was thinking about, so.
Your scope, yeah. So what would it take to get the actual round, or turnaround down at the end of that road? Would that be included in the price, or is that something like you'd have to do more extra?
Yeah, well, it, it's, to be honest, it's not going to be real pretty. It's going to be a little hammerhead just to be able to maneuver the trucks around.
I'm just thinking, just for our sake, the fire department, so I don't have to back the truck all the way out. We can do a 90 to 90 back or something.
If you have an engine in there, I think you're backing all the way out, to be honest. Unless you want to buy property. But our, our thought was, let's get something significant enough to get the trucks to be able to turn around, which the, the right of way to the south is, is pretty open. So instead of encroaching up into somebody's property, our thought was, if we can have the movement being straight east at the end and then backing up to the south and then turning around. The area to the north is heavily treed and there's, it drops off quite a bit, so it would be quite a bit more to go in that direction. It might, it might be required. We'll look at it closer to see, but it, it's not going to be one of our standard cul-de-sac turnarounds by any means.
So just for perspective's sake, Gary, how would you, say there's a house that has an incident down here at the very end, how would you expect like the fire department to, because we don't have suppression, hydrant suppression in this area. So like, what would that look like? Like, how would you run your tender operations? Like, what kind of, what kind of scale do you have to pull in for, you know, to mitigate a situation down at that far end?
Councilman Henderson, yeah, it's definitely going to be a challenge, because you've got one access in and one access out. So we would probably have to run a fair amount of large diameter hose, say up to, if you're looking at the, I guess, the top part of the.
Brockton Lane right there?
Well, I mean, yeah, I mean, but not all the way out. I'd bring it halfway in. And then they're going to have to back down halfway, dump into the pool, and then provide large LDH, probably no more than 300 feet. And then probably place a pumper in between. So there's options to do it. It's just a matter, it's going to be a pretty significant setup in that capacity.
I'm just thinking, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, as far as water in the old village, obviously, we don't have suppression. I, I look at the hydrants that we have in the old village as Hollywood hydrants, because the only way that we're going to put out a fire there is basically doing the same thing in the old village is, is drafting.
So the Matt's point, and that might be something like a conversation we should have sooner rather than later about suppression then, because it's not just, I think, the businesses that get affected by this as well. It's, it's the manpower that it could, that it could possibly take to get a situation like that mitigated.
So if we decided to go with, say, the mill and overlay, that would still be next summer?
Yeah, yeah.
So, and we know this study is going to be done sometime late this fall. I mean, in a way, it probably doesn't matter, the road shot. I'm pretty sure we can come up with 200K.
Yeah. Yeah, Mayor and council, the reason why I brought you tonight for discussion is because of the whole water tower land to the east, what we want to do with it, how long do we want to do a project? We had planned on doing a full reclamation and paving, which is significantly more expensive. However, it extends the roadway that much longer. If that's something we're not looking to do right now, and we think it's, should just do the seven or a year fix, which is going to be much better than what it is currently, then it would be significantly cheaper to do. And we can figure out, you know, what else to do with additional dollars, whether let's wait for the next year or whatever else, but.
And I just think there's so many unknowns here that it makes sense to.
Again, we're not looking for getting any, there's no, there's no action tonight here to approve anything. We're not looking to approve engineering or anything like that. We can do that later on at a different time, but. And again, you will have the pavement management study before you approve any of this project specifically. It was just more or less to get your heads thinking about, okay, we have other things going on here than just the roadway getting done, because it is significant. But should also be known that there is no planned assessments for any of these projects either, so. Then maybe what the residents are here thinking about is if there's going to be assessments, and there will not be any planned assessments for either one of the projects that were proposed.
We want to hear from the residents if they want to speak up, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, we can, yeah. Do you guys have anything to say, or have you heard everything, you get everything answered? Come on forward if you.
It'll bite.
Just name and address and.
Campbell, Gruenian, 1-8541, 152nd Avenue North, Dayton, Minnesota. We're not scheduled for services till after 25th. That's on the comprehensive plan. The school at the end basically is not likely to happen. They graduated 12 people last year. It's a small, private Catholic-type school. It's not sponsored by any dioceses or anything like this. They're going to have a real hard time pulling it off. It'd be almost, they'd have, they'd have to win the lottery to put a school in there. The road is in pretty rough shape, but I don't see the. I would be careful on trying to go too cheap on it, I guess, because I don't see anything coming down the road. You know, we're not, Thicket Lane, supposed to, who's behind this is not supposed to ever get sewer and water. And we're at 50, 2050 plus, and that's the area. And that's, the area in north of here is 2050-plus also. So your problem is, you need a water tower, and you want, this is probably the best place to put it, because it's probably the highest spot around, even when the engineering's done on it. And then we can see that, so you're gonna have to make your mind up on that and then decide what's gonna happen. And if you have to wind up waiting for the school to either put one up or let it go back to the trust, that's gonna be another problem. But it's not really an area that's been anticipated for city services, at least not for another 25 years. So that's just it, but the road is in bad shape. Appreciate you're looking at it, finally.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay.
I'm Claire Vander Crummert, and I live on 152nd, right on the corner, 18680. And we built our house 29 years ago, and yes, the road is in interesting shape. Thank you for patching it last year, and after listening to all the concerns and issues that have been brought up by the council, and listening to the figures, and realizing up to this point, basically, the road is used by the residents that live on that street or people visiting them. And because, you know, I'm looking at, oh, if you re, just do a resurface of it, you're talking maybe eight years, six to eight years, where you grind and resurface, is that correct?
The grind, you, for the Millen overlay, you grind the top inch and a half and then...
Right, right, right.
Yep.
If the Holy Trinity School would go in, it would have to be within the next six years. So to me, if you're going to have a school or a water tower or anything, you're gonna have to do something different anyway. So I feel the overlay, the Millen overlay, is the most reasonable solution, after listening to all of you. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ma'am? Yeah.
Excuse me?
I have one right now.
So you just wanted to...
Just, yeah, just general discussion. If you have any more direction, that's what we're looking for tonight, but you'll see something moving forward. Do you want an anonymous, like, idea, or you want an overall, do you want to agree?
It's great, I mean, if you think Millen overlay is the way to go, we'll prepare, you know, more details on that and come forward for a formal action.
With the way the trust seems like, it seems like it'd be in my best interest to give them that, so.
We'll plan, oh, sorry.
Oh, go ahead, you're good.
We'll, we'll plan on a Millen overlay, coming back with that if there's any second thoughts, or maybe you get contacted by more residents, and we can always change that again. But we just wanted to know the direction before we just came back with information for the 67000.
To me, also, like, the most prudent path, since we don't know, you know, when the when is, as far as the school being able to pull something together, or the water tower piece of it, you know, that, that we certainly shouldn't kick the can down the road for another eight years while we're waiting to see what happens, so I think this is the most logical solution for that. I also, when we do get the pavement study, and that's sort of my hesitance around any of this, is, you know, this one will probably be top five anyway, and if we find out that it's, you know, number 25 on the list, I guess we've still got time to rethink it, but at this point, it makes sense to move ahead with the Millen overlay.
Okay. All right, we will plan on that and change directions if anything new comes up.
All right. Okay, item J.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Tonight, before you, we have an interim use permit for IUP, for a home extended business for indoor and outdoor storage facility located at 13401 Zanzibar Lane. The applicant is Noah Heinan. He lives on the property. His parents, Joanna and Greg Heinan, are the owners of the property. The Heinans purchased the property in 2019. At that time, the property was already being used for an indoor/outdoor storage facility, however, the previous owner did not obtain an IUP for this type of use. I have a couple of aerials up here that you can see from 2018, where they have some outdoor storage, and then this last one on the bottom is from 2022, when the Heinans owned the property. The land use, the property is currently zoned agricultural, A1 residential. It's guided for low-density residential in the 2040 comp plan, and the property is in the post-2050 staging area. Approximately 20.22 acres of the 32.67 acres are within the FEMA 100-year floodplain, which you can see in the picture is outlined by this, this line in the dots. Dayton Creek runs through the property, which is considered an MPCA impaired stream, and there are wetlands that go through, and with those require a 25 to 35-foot vegetated buffer. On this, you can kind of see, we tried to draw on there approximately what a 25-foot buffer would look like, so that there couldn't be any storage or anything beyond that area. For interim use permits, interim use is a use that's currently acceptable, but in the future, it may lo, may no longer be acceptable. The interim use permit process intended to provide the city with an opportunity to allow a use that meets one of the following criteria. The use is for a brief period of time until a permanent location is obtained, or while a permanent location is under construction. The use is judged by the city council to be presently acceptable, but with anticipated development or redevelopment, and will not, and will be acceptable in the future, or will be replaced in the future by a permanent or conditional use within the respective district. And the use is judged by the city council to reflect the long-range vision for the area and is in compliance with the comprehensive plan. City code section, whoops, lost my little part there. How do I go back?
Arrow, down, arrow.
Down?
Yep.
Okay, sorry about that. For a home extended business, if I can move this out of the way. There. The home extended business, there are certain, whoops, I'm not at the right one, Amy, let's see. There we go. City code 1001.13 for a home extended business, the performance standards. The occupation, use of the home shall not exceed 30% of the floor area of the principal dwelling, except the garage. No outdoor storage of supplies, materials, debris, equipment, machinery, or maintenance items shall be kept outside the structure. They have to be enclosed in the structure on properties less than two and a half acres. This property is more than two and a half acres, so they are allowed to have outdoor storage, provided that the outdoor storage is significantly screened from view from the street and adjacent properties, and does not exceed 20% of the lot. Screening shall be consistent of a combination of existing or proposed landscaping and fencing. Home extended business shall be set back a minimum of 100 feet from any dwelling other than that of the subject property. The garage or one accessory building may be used for the business, provided there is still a garage space to park a vehicle, and accessory buildings shall meet the accessory building design requirements per subsection 1001.35. The home extended business shall be conducted entirely by the occupants of the home and up to two non-resident employees or contract employees working at or reporting to the home. The Heinans have indicated that it'll just be their son, Noah, who lives on the property, and Joanna and Greg, his parents, will be working there. Joanna does the, the bookkeeping, and Greg does some of the maintenance and different things around the property. No more than one vehicle, which shall be under the gross weight of 12,000 pounds associated with the business can be parked overnight outside or near the home. One vehicle which exceeds 12,000 pounds may be stored on-site, provided the vehicle does not exceed a gross weight rating of 18,000 pounds, and the vehicle is stored entirely within a building or is significantly screened from view from the road or surrounding properties. Home extended business shall not create a parking demand in excess of which, that the road or surrounding, or, sorry, excuse me, that which can be accommodated in the existing driveway, where no vehicle is parked closer than 15 feet from the curb line or the edge in your packet, and which I'll go to the next slide, they do have a parking area that they're proposing. Direct sale of goods that are not produced on-site is prohibited. Dust control measures may be required. Heinans had stated that they are planning on paving the entrance going in there, so that would significantly take down some of the dust and gravel that would go out on our newly paved road on Zanzibar Lane. And any other reasonable conditions required by the city council. The last thing is, the city council may allow a home occupation to operate in excess of these provisions that are in our code. They have to be reasonable ones, they can be due to the nature of the home occup, home occupancy, or through mitigation measures like requiring increased landscaping or screening. The home occupation will not adversely impact neighbors, properties, or become nuisance. As far as fencing, A1 agricultural is residential, even though it's a home extended business, they still have to follow the residential guidelines for fencing. The diagram that's on here is one that was drawn up by the Planning Commission. Right before this, they had a eight-foot fence that went down the property, all the way to Zanzibar Lane and across the front of the buildings. They have since taken that fence down. The posts, however, are still in place. Our city code for residential fences states that they cannot be higher than six feet. The, the fence also, in the front yard or a corner lot that has a side yard on the corner has, has two fronts, basically, and it cannot be higher than four feet. Along the side, if they are set back 20 feet from the front facade of the home, they can then go to six feet. Well, that's home in the front, sorry, tried to get my cursor over there, is their rental property. The Noah Heinan actually lives in this one, so it kind of makes it impossible for a six-foot, anything larger than a, taller than a six-foot fence would have to start back here. At the September 7th Planning Commission meeting, the Planning Commission recommended the IUP for approval with all 20 of these items' conditions. I can go through each one of them if you like, or I know they were in your packet. I've highlighted a couple on the screen, because as I indicated on the previous screen, the current code only allows for one accessory building to be used. The Heinans have five accessory buildings on the site. Planning Commission thought it was kind of, if they had to empty them all out and not have anything in there, that it was kind of defeating the purpose of having indoor storage available to them. So they're proposing that they would be able to use four accessory buildings. And the other change that they wanted to see was, the screening shall be installed at the minimum of 50% opacity year-round along the north and east property lines. And then, like I said, they, on that previous screen, they kind of indicated here, they wanted it to come out from this building that is the closest, it's approximately 45 and a half feet set back from the property line, so that they would have a six-foot fence extending out to here to here, and then along this back part to the, north is the city property, there's a baseball field, there's nobody really behind them at all. So it wasn't, there's a lot of trees in the back of the property that screens them from any adjoining properties. The CUP, or IUPs are five years long. The applicants had indicated, you know, they'd like to be there longer. So if they, that'd be up to the council, if, you know, after five years, if there's no, pending no violations or anything like that, if, they would have to go through the same process all over again, we just don't extend it, they would have to go through this whole IUP process. If at any time during this five years, if we get any complaints and that they're not following the resolution or the approval of the IUP, they would have 60 days, they'd get notified, they'd have 60 days to make these corrections. If they don't, then their IUP would be revoked. The Minnesota Department of Natural Resources, they have a flood ordinance that cities adopt, and part of the floodplain ordinance is that in a floodplain, recreational vehicles can be stored as long as they are operational, that they are easily moved, and that they, they're on a single chassis of 400 square feet or less, and they're self-propelled or permanently towable by a light-duty truck. The Planning Commission also recommended that only recreational vehicles are allowed to be stored there. They did not want semis or other things stored on the property. The, the Department of Natural Resources, as far as fencing, what's allowed in a floodplain is an open type of fence of posts and horizontally-run wire. Fences not meeting the definition of a farm fence are not permitted in a floodplain. So the one picture here, where the back of this building, where they'd like to extend six feet, that is in the floodplain. And see, it goes all the way up to the back of the building through this other one, so it could only be a wire fence that would be allowed in there. But again, the council can recommend something different. This is a diagram that was included, that was submitted by the property owners, that went in the Planning Commission packet of their area of, right here would be the parking. They would have outdoor storage in this area. These two buildings, they're counting them as each as a building, but they're almost like connected with like a gate here, and there's storage in between, but they would like to use these four buildings for their indoor storage. Currently, staff has been in this building and these two, but we have not had access to this one yet. There is a, there was a semi-repair business that was going on in there. He's in the process of moving everything out. He's been given till September 30th to have everything out, and then the city has contacted the Heinans that on Monday, October 2nd, since the 30th falls on a weekend, that will be out to do a fire inspection, and that would include the fire chief going with us, a building official, and John, myself, and Zach. So I think I'll stop right there and see if there's any questions from the council. I know that Noah is online and...
Joanna.
And Joanna, his mom, and probably his dad is online too, if you have any questions for them.
I just have one question, just so I can figure the right property. Zach, this is the property that for the past few months, we've been dealing with issues, fire issues on, that the occupant has been reluctant to move forward with in a timely manner. Am I, am I understanding this correctly, or am I having a misunderstanding of that fact?
Yeah, so roughly one year ago, August, so it'd been a month and, a year and a month from today, we contacted this individual at the beginning to be able to cite the nuisance violations and the, some storage and the, so on and so forth with this property. So we've been working with this applicant for, or this resident for a year and some change now.
And have we had any fire calls on this property, Chief?
Councilman Trolle, a month ago, the resident, Mr. Heinan, made a request for a burn permit. I denied the burn permit at that time because of how dry it was outside. All of a sudden, Hunter, the CSO, stopped in and asked if I had... All of a sudden, Hunter, the CSO stopped in and asked if I had issued a burn permit. And I said, no, I had not. And they were burning plastics and garbage and whatnot. And I had law enforcement issue a fine to them based on what we had found that was burning. So that was one of the issues. And we've had some other challenges, just in general, as Zach alluded to before.
Thank you.
Something?
I can wait. Go ahead.
I have a number of questions. And I might, I'll try to do this in some kinda coherent order. But on page 75 of our packet, number five, it talks about vehicle trips will be limited to eight per day. I wonder how that, that works.
That is also something in the home extended business code. Staff looked at it that possibly, you know, depending on stacking, that, you know, in the spring and in the fall is probably gonna be the busiest time when they're bringing stuff in, they're taking stuff out, that they'd have to be careful with how many people are coming at the same time, whether they schedule times with their renters or not, just to make sure that they're not, you know, they're stacked up along Zanzibar and it's not going into South Diamond Lake Road, or it's not gonna cause a problem. They, they do have some room to move into the property a little bit, but, so our staff is really flexible on the eight trips per day. It's just that's what the current code has in it now.
The current code is really intended at, I don't look at this as a residential property. I know we do, code does, but
Correct.
It's, it's a big egg lot. So I think a lot of the home occupation businesses are intended to be, and I mean, to protect the houses near them and developments in the area.
Suzie's small engine repair in the garage.
Yeah, to me, eight seems kinda almost silly. I mean, I don't know how you're gonna
Monitor.
Yeah.
Mark someone there to check.
I can see having a requirement that you're not gonna have to stack up into the road.
Yep.
Not gonna heal.
I can see that.
And a home occupation or a home occupancy is supposed to be an accessory to the primary dwelling, and they're operating more as a commercial business in a residential area.
So that's, well, that was one of my concerns. It didn't seem practical to me to have that limit. On page 77, it talks about only RVs as defined by Minnesota Model Floodplain Ordinance. One question I have on that, is it, that's a model ordinance? Have we adopted it as a city, or are we using it as a guideline?
We have adopted a floodplain ordinance in our, I apologize, I'm not sure what the, or what number it is, or what, but no, we have adopted ours, and in there it does say recreational vehicles are allowed in a floodplain.
Yeah, that piece of it, but it seems to imply only RVs. And I know people store boats in the winter and snowmobiles in the summer and
Well, and I thought they had specifically said that they had occasionally stored food trucks or stuff like that, so I don't
Correct, and we kinda, at the Planning Commission meeting, this was brought up, and we, they kinda went back and forth, and they were okay with boats and boat trailers, but they didn't, there was some, they have a tenant that does, John, I can't remember, the one that has a commercial, or it's a semi truck, but it's
It was essentially a semi trailer that keeps a racing car, race car. So it could also be
That's kinda recreation, ain't it?
Well, it also, I think, had like a sleeping compartment within the trailer too.
Right.
So it's a bigger trailer, which also gets to my other question. On page 90, it talks about a 28-foot limit and
And that we took out. That was in the planning packet. And that's what we, staff had first recommended because we were trying to limit so that semi trailers and that wouldn't be allowed, that it would be just for recreational-type vehicles, since Zanzibar has posted no commercial vehicles.
Sure, and I get that we're trying to exclude that or prevent that from happening, which makes sense to me, but I, I own a RV, right? It's, it's a 31-foot camper with it, so it's more than 34 feet from end to end, and I think that's how you gotta measure it, at least that's what they do when you, they charge you for it. And that's not the biggest thing on the road by any stretch, as far as campers go, so I
Right, and we took that out. That's what at first we proposed to the Planning Commission. And after discussion with them, that's why we took that requirement out.
Oh, you did take it out?
Yes.
Okay, it seemed to be in our packet, but
It was in, on 77 and 78, I believe.
That's the council packet.
That's the council packet. Later on is the Planning Commission packet on the 90.
Okay, okay. So we don't have that limit then?
Correct, that's been removed.
All right, that seemed, this is nitpicky, but on page 102, it mentions that Dayton has a lack of arterial roadways. I don't see the point of including that. It doesn't seem relevant to this. Eight trips a day. I think those were most of my question, but out of the letter that we received today, applicants are implying that, that there was approval for the fence that has not progressed. And so I'm wondering where, what, who approved it, or what approval there was of that.
Zach can speak on it.
I'll do my best to speak on what I know, 'cause I was not involved, mayor and council. So the fence was requested, I will say, a number of years ago by the applicant to be able to put an agricultural fence in. At the time, there was no permit required for agricultural fence in an agricultural property for they put it in. And so there was not any review of, again, the fence, fence and no permit pulled for it. You are not allowed to put a, you can use an agricultural fence, which would be like a split rail fence or an electric fence for keeping agricultural in, which would be horses or grain or whatever. But you are not allowed to put, you know, any type of fence up you want to for agricultural purposes. The purpose of the fence put up was for screening, which is not allowed in a residential district, 'cause it doesn't meet all the code requirements of that. Agricultural is, yeah, classified as residential in our code. So it was never permitted. It was requested, could they put one up? The answer was yes, however, never specified what kind or whatever else, and there was no dialogue done back and forth there. The current fence is fine where it sits today, so it is far enough back from city right-of-way and from the edge of the roadway, which is essentially where it is today. It is essentially okay to have there, just based on what the current classification of that roadway is. We can't use future classifications of the roadway. There's a difference in the code of a residential street versus an arterial street. This is not considered an arterial street at this point. That would be Dayton Parkway. And so there's a further setback from that roadway, that this is currently not Dayton Parkway, so we have to use the current classification. And so it is currently in an okay location. It just was not constructed with correct materials. So that is why city staff instructed them to remove the panels, and they left the posts in the ground, 'cause that was a significant amount of work, and we understood that. We're trying to work with the applicant and the resident to figure out what we can do for an applicable use of the fence. But the fence was, I will say, not approved, but just was not denied because there was no fence permit pulled. And that was at the, that was at city staff discretion at that time. That city staff is no longer here, so that answers your question, hopefully.
I think so. Yeah, I guess that's, that's all I had. And I get, I get a little bit lost. It seems like an okay use of the property as long as it doesn't become something like to the north of it, where apparently we
We have, city staff has no concerns over clean, organized outdoor storage and indoor storage. That is not a concern of city staff if it's done properly. The concern is that we do not want to have, either what we had a year ago when we got the nuisance complaints from both residents and from the MPCA and from Hennepin County versus what we have, you know, what we could have if it was, again, ordered.
Last thing, comment I might wanna make here is, is, I don't know if anybody here can answer that, but maybe the people online, if they're gonna be doing any kind of service to these RVs, winterizing, that kinda thing, that could cause the need or the requirement for hazardous waste permit from Hennepin County.
We did put in there as condition number six, there to be no repair work on vehicles on site. Could put maintenance, you know, add that into there so that they know that no type of work. It's specifically for storage.
Okay.
The applicant was okay with all requirements and recommendations done on this approval, just so you're aware. The applicant was okay with all of the conditions on that approval.
You mean except
Except for the ones in the last three. Oh, yes, yeah, correct, sorry.
Except for two, three, and 14.
You good?
Correct.
Yeah, well, that's all the questions I have.
Do you have anything, Travis, or?
No, I don't.
So IUP of five years, that, I mean, I'd be okay with an IUP that just simply expired when they moved, when they shut the business down, or five years seems kinda short for something like this. I mean, I, I might be okay, I don't like IUPs in general. I'm okay with this, because it's, if the property sells, I'm pretty sure we'd wanna look at it again. Five seems kinda short.
Is five standard? 'Cause I was under the impression that IUPs generally went with, I mean,
They have a time limit. Well, we've, we've done some lately like that, and I'm okay with that, because that just says, you know, when that use changes, we'll look at it again. My problem with the, with a five-year IUP is in five years, you could get a new council, and they could look at it and say, no, we don't want that anymore. And now you got a whole, you know, you have
Or they've invested.
Yeah, anything they have invested is, is gone.
So normally, I would, in most circumstances, I think I would agree with you, Mr. Mayor, on that, that piece.
And so I also had a question about the RV, because I, to me, what I'd really be concerned about is, is it likely to leak? Is it dangerous, hazardous? If it's not, I don't care what they store in there. I don't, I don't think. I don't, I don't know what, what they could put in there that. So I'm a little bit concerned about the RV classification. I'd like to see, I'm not sure what I'd like to see, but it just sounded like from the Planning Commission meeting that there was other things that they would store, that they could store that wouldn't be classified as, as recreational vehicles, but
Do we wanna ask the applicant? Do they wanna speak? I mean, I don't, I don't know what to tell you. I mean, I don't know what people store, and I can't tell you what they're gonna store. If they have a enclosed trailer, they can store whatever the heck they want, I guess. But I don't know if that's the right answer or not.
Yeah.
Like a trailer tires.
Correct, yeah.
They can store that indoors.
Noah, you should be able to speak if you'd like.
Nada? Well, like I said, I know during the Planning Commission meeting, they had mentioned that there were other
Joanna wants to try, see if that works.
Oh, could you analyze?
Yeah, we're good.
Okay, great. Council, mayor, thank you for listening to us today and talking about our project we have going. It's, we are in agreement with everything that's being proposed, except the fence location, as Zach was saying. We already have substantial financial input into the current fence location. And where we currently have it, I think I submitted a map in an earlier meeting. And the fence location being proposed by the council is really not gonna work for the project that we have in mind for the proposed use of the space. We propose where it currently is, we have been in negotiation with Zach and Tori about the material being used and the height of the fence. We would like to provide a more consistent visual barrier to the whole thing, which will not be there at the place at that setback. Additionally, it will cause issue with the movement in and out of the campers, which it'll, it'll create an issue with people backing in and out if it's that far back between those buildings that way. It will just make it harder to move vehicles around, and it will hinder our emergency flood plan that we have in place for moving things if that occurs. And additionally, we're mostly concerned with the security of the whole thing. We'd like to provide security to the people who put their items inside. We would like fence, we already have fence posts to the south, and would like to continue them up front. And to not allow, where you see the parking area there, which is our floodplain plan of action, should that be necessary. We've never, never had a flood on the property in that area, nor the previous owner has never had a flood in that floodplain area. We will get that redelineated within the next year according to the terms put forth by the Planning Commission. But just to move the fence at this point will be a great financial burden to us to have to do, and just not gonna be something we're gonna be able to put it where you're proposing.
What, what do you store other than recreational vehicles?
We have had requests and currently do have, I think, three people that have semi trailers, not the cabs, just the trailers that they need to store. They don't leak. They're able to come in and out. They're fully licensed vehicles. They are movable if they need to be. But that seems to be a need within the community that people, you know, who do trucking need somewhere to put their cabs. We've done that. So I don't see that that would be, it seems almost an easier thing or a safer thing to store than an RV. There's no oil or anything. It's further above the ground. It really has never been a, you know, an issue for us to store those items. They're really simple to store. We have people with trailers with jet skis and things like that. Just basically, consider the things that your citizens of Dayton may have to store that they, through ordinances in their own residential community, are not allowed to put on their own properties in their driveways. These are the types of services we'd like to offer to the community and have it in here in a secure way, fully fenced. Where the council, or the Planning Commission has proposed, we put the fence lining up the front of that building also would hinder the security of that front building, 'cause it actually has a front entrance. And so that would be accessible from Zanzibar. And in the 20-plus, probably 30 years that this service has been offered at this location, we've never, there has never been, we were, we were actually friends with the previous owner. We are friends with the previous owner that we bought the property from. Many decades ago, we actually stored things on his property for a fee. That's how we got to know him originally. And never in the history of the property was there ever a lineup of vehicles along Zanzibar to get in or anything like that. So that's not ever, I, that's not a concern to us, nor should it be to anyone else, that that doesn't happen with this business. So that's all I have, I guess. If you have any questions for me, let me know.
So I don't know how we, we adjust this, but I would like to open it up to more than recreational storage. I don't, like I said, I don't know, I don't know what that means as far as herbage goes.
You thinking, anything in particular? 'Cause like, I know she brought up semis, but we don't know what's in the semis. So like that, to me, that's a concern. Like, yeah, the semis themselves don't leak, but what if there's something? Like a trailer tires or whatever, just whatever it might be.
Yeah, I don't know the condition of the semi.
And again, if it, if it doesn't leak, if it doesn't explode, if it doesn't, I don't know why we, we would care.
It's a commercial vehicle, and Zanzibar has posted no commercial vehicles.
Well, then they're in violation of that one. So I'm not worried about, I mean, I don't, I don't think we should set this up so that it's in compliance with, you know, what the roads are, because the roads are already protected by their statutes. I, I just, it just seems to me that there is, there is, it's kind of a I, I just, it just seems to me that there is, there is, it's kind of a, a, a limit that, to me, doesn't make much sense, but. And as far as the fence goes, I don't have a problem, but I, I, I think we're, we're, we're kind of proposing that fence doesn't, I don't see that that makes any sense, because now you've got ugly on top of ugly. I mean, now you've got the front line of that building as part of the fence, you've got the other building there. I don't have a problem where the fences are today. I don't know what the answer is as far as how opaque it should be. I know if it was my business, I'd probably want it pretty opaque, but that's probably something that, you know, can take some, some give and take, but where the fence is today, I, I don't have any problem with it. Where the fence, where that fence would be, it just seems like that fence is right in the way.
Yeah, I agree, I don't, I don't know what purpose it serves.
Right.
It's not going to screen much, being that far back from the road. And it's a gate you got to open every time somebody comes in or out.
Well, not only that, but now you have access to, to the north side without going through a fence, so there's no security there.
You could, I mean, to fix that problem, you could just shift the fence, that red line to go further north and then drop it over to that building. If that's the concern is you want to, you don't want access for security, I, I can get that. My bigger concern on this is, you know, we spent a year dealing with this property, and they haven't, from my understanding, been the most willing to work with us, so I'm, I can get behind a lot of this, but I think the one thing I would want to keep is the five-year limit on it. Because I think if, if we continue to have problems, we need to have something to fall back on if it's not being followed.
Well, they can inspect it every year, right?
Correct, yeah, but it took us a year last time to get it, try to get things taken care of, and so I think.
Well, now they all have 60 days.
I'll disagree. I, I don't know, I would say that'd be the one piece. I'm, I'm willing to work on a lot of it, but that's the one piece, I think. For this particular property, given our past, I think makes sense.
If I may, am I verbal right now?
Sure.
Considering what your problems with us have been, have also been our problems with the person we allowed in. And we share your pain, we no longer wish for that, he is leaving, and we know, you know, we have no intention of being a nuisance property, we would like to run a clean and order the operation. We are not letting, you know, that was something that didn't turn out very well for us, and it wasn't a matter of non-compliance as much as, you know, we, we let someone in that really we were having a very hard time getting rid of, and we finally are, so I don't think that'll be a problem moving forward. He has until September 30th to leave, and we don't intend to ever make that mistake again. You know, with someone like that, we prefer to just continue on the way it has been going for all these years, you know, in the same, offering the same service, not letting, I don't know. The complaints that came were something that we were not able to deal with instantly, even as much as we would have liked to do. So it wasn't a matter of non-compliance, and we didn't wish to do that, so just for the record, I wanted to put that forward.
That was the semi-repair?
Correct.
And is that your recollection, Zach, is that where this problem was?
Okay. Okay, well, I'm.
Yeah, prior to, prior to him coming in, a little over a year ago, there were never any problems, there were never any complaints of any kind. So, and if you would like to look through police records, which I know you have at your access, the police reports all are pertaining to him, and there, I don't foresee any more of those once he's gone, hopefully, so. I don't, I don't think that'll be a problem. It wasn't a matter of non-compliance on our part, we didn't not wish to be non-compliant in any way.
Okay. Does anybody else got anything? It seems like we have a couple of issues. IUP length? Guess I would propose we put it at 10.
That sounds good to me. We have no intention of selling the property anytime soon, and we would hope to just continue being able to offer this service to the city.
I think I, I would be okay with that, particularly because there's the annual inspection requirement.
Yeah.
And, you know, I think we need to, need to do that to, you know, regain some comfort level on this. I appreciate that the, the problem child is on his way out, so to speak, so maybe that does clear it up. But the annual, annual inspections would certainly be our tool to ensure that that's the case. I agree with you, Dennis, I don't think we need extra language in here around commercial vehicles because they're already not allowed on Zanzibar, so we don't need laws for laws, in, in my view. I do have some concern over the semi-trailers, you know, how do you tell one from another? What I, what I would hate to see here is that, where you see sometimes is, you know, there's semi-trailers that go to die, and people park them there permanently, and they're, you know, there they sit and rust, and that doesn't appeal to me. So I don't think we, I, I don't know how we describe that exactly, to get the, you know, you'd say anything under 53 feet because that's a semi-trailer, but I don't know, there's going to be some weird scenario with that too.
Could you put some requirement on there that, that the storage, individual storage can't be longer than the yearly inspection or something? Or, I, I don't know. But yeah, I get your point, because.
Mr. Mayor remembers the council, that isn't the issue, it's the issue that they had with the repair shop that they, they would have to get rid of them themselves. If the owner didn't come pick it up during that year or whatever, the, the owners of the property would have to get rid of it. So that would be up to the property owner at that point. And under, under the ordinance with the no commercial vehicles, they wouldn't be allowed to bring a semi-trailer in there to begin with, so it's a moot point.
Okay.
That's what it seems like.
So what does that mean, as far as the RV limit?
So you're thinking like RVs, boats, ATVs, like, like, to me, those are all, yeah, those are all recreational vehicles in my mind anyways? Like, that's kind of how I, I look at them, so I don't know.
But then somebody mentioned a race trailer that, you know, and those are sometimes in semis, but those are, you know, it tends to be the shop and the vehicle and so on, and.
It just seems like, you know, this is similar to the fence ordinance where we try to fit, you know, every circumstance. And to me, if it can't go boom, if it can't pollute the waters, I don't know why we care. And if, if they're, they're putting up screening.
Yeah, and on the fence thing, I don't think the, the fence, proposed fence that was drawn in red accomplishes anything. And I, you know, I guess I'm, it sounds like it's a little bit muddy about when or what was approved or not approved when the, you know, the original design of the fence went in. You know, I think that's where the landowner, you know, lessons learned, might want to be more collaborative with the city on what they're planning to do, but I think if the goal is to create some security and some screening from, from the road, it, it kind of needs to be where it is. And so I, I'm probably okay with the fence as proposed, not the one that was suggested by the planning commission.
As existing, not as opposed.
The lines of posts, I guess, that are, that are there today. If they meet the required setbacks from the road as it exists today, I think that's fine, and I think we, you know, we don't know exactly where Dayton Parkway is going, but if it does come up this, this route, you know, we're probably going to have to be buying additional right of way anyway.
Yep.
And so with fences in the way, well, that's part of the deal. So I, I'm not, I think for the fence to do any good, it kind of has to be where the posts are.
The original fence that was on the post and the material was eight feet high. So just want to make sure that the applicant understands too, that if you're going to keep the fence posts where they are, that the material that they put on it can not exceed six feet in height, or.
Yeah, and I thought, yeah, the letter stated that, but, and yeah, 60.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
So I, yeah, well, I don't know what language to use, Dennis, you're closer to saying, saying it in the form of a sentence than I am.
I, I.
We kind of know what it, what we want there.
What it, what it should look like, yeah.
Right, how do you describe it?
We could write it, any vehicle except, and then list all the ones we don't want on there, if that's easier. I don't know the right way to do it.
Oh, I don't know, is the Titan missile okay? See, it's just, when you do stuff like that, you get caught up in these, we missed something kind of thing, and I, I.
The ifs, this, not that.
Yeah, but the other way isn't working for us, I was just trying to push it from the opposite direction.
Vehicle allowed by the roadway?
That would be okay.
You know, because the, the road is posted, no commercial.
Yeah, but then really what you're saying is anything, because they can't take commercial there anyways because it's not allowed on the roadway. Which, by the way, I'd be okay with. I mean, it's already illegal to, to ooze fluids into the, the wetland.
Wetland, yeah.
But. Go ahead. You're pondering.
Nope, I can ponder.
I'm just thinking like, there's a definite difference between like.
I just want to make sure it's enforceable too.
Yeah.
Because I want to make sure that what we're allowing to do, and which I'm not disagreeing with any of the comments made or, or saying that I agree or disagree, it's just, how do we enforce it is the main thing.
Right.
Is, if there's no commercial vehicles, again, allowed down Zanzibar anyways, that's enforceable by the fact, how'd you get this commercial vehicle there?
Yep.
You had to have gone down Zanzibar.
Well, to that point, I kind of.
But then at the same point, there's been commercial vehicles down there so far.
Right.
And then those are all handled by that process. So I don't know what to do either. Again, I don't know, and we have to make sure it's enforceable, that's the main thing.
Going back to the race trailer, you know, topic, like, to anybody, it wouldn't know what that, you know, couldn't differentiate the big blue, you know, race trailer that's parked there versus the food trailer or whatever semi-trailer that's back there, so it's like, you know, we look at commercial that way. In that sense, like the race trailer, if it's towed by an F-350 with hydraulic plate brakes, is it considered commercial? Is it close to a semi-trailer that's got air brakes and all this other stuff? Like, that's, like, to your point, how do you enforce that? Because somebody driving by would be like, well, that's a commercial trailer, but in reality, it's not.
If it's by a semi, I believe that the Department of Transportation identifies commercial vehicles by weight.
Right.
Anything over 10,000 gross vehicles.
But to your point, you're not going to go up there and put the thing on scales and be like, well.
But you could.
You could.
We're going to purchase scales.
We don't have a scale.
That's what goes back to Zach's enforcement, like, to anybody driving down the road, they could see it, and it looks like a commercial trailer, they could call it, but in reality, it's not, so I mean, to your point, how do you enforce it?
They call it up, we just look at it, right?
That's what I'm saying, take nine people out of this room, out of 10, one of them knows that it's a race trailer that falls under 10, but looks of it, it looks like a commercial trailer. So it's like you got one person who knows what they're talking about, nine other people, it's just subjective.
Keep in mind, this has a large floodplain, and they have to be, per the DNR, easily movable, readily movable. If it's a semi-type trailer that has recreational vehicles in it, but the cab of the semi or the truck isn't there, that's not typically easily moved or self-propelled or.
But a local person with a race trailer and a truck five minutes away could easily be part of that plan, is, is the other side of that, is what I'm getting with.
Yeah, and to, I, I realize it's, it's a little outside the bounds, but I don't know that that area is, that I have ever seen that area flood, but it just seems kind of a.
It's somebody's job to think about it.
I, I know. It's got to be, yeah.
Could I suggest something, RVs, which would be anything, could be driven or non-driven, a trailer, but a trailer no longer than 50 feet or something. That way you get trailers defined as, but RVs are, you know, if you have a giant Class A, you could still park it there, that's going to be longer than 50 feet, but it's not considered a trailer.
I was even on the road of like, has to be movable, if not self-propelled, means to be movable by an F-250, and that then limits the.
So we're picking brands?
Yeah.
A one-ton truck.
Sure. I'm just, I'm just thinking of an aspect of a trailer, a trailer length, so that you don't have, you can just declassify the commercial trailer and say 50 feet.
50 feet.
All of them are commercial, 53 feet long.
Does the applicant have a problem with that, is that?
So I would say trailers.
I think the 53-foot length is the standard, but generally, our process is to move things around using a skid steer, and it's not difficult, and it's not a problem, as long as anything, everything is in good working order, you know, the, the wheels work and everything like that is all working, it, it's not a problem to move things around. And I'd also like to make a point that we don't, I mean, we, we seem to be going around and around, like the race trailer. We, we don't currently have a race trailer, nor a race trailer client, just for the record, and we don't get, a majority of our requests are not from semi-trailers. This is not going to be a surplus of that kind of thing, it is mostly campers and boats and RVs. So I think you don't, I, I'd ask you not to, you know, split hairs or be overly concerned about what we're putting because that's really not, I don't think you're going to find that to be a problem with us in the future, and that's, that's not really, shouldn't be too much of an issue. I don't think you need to spend a lot of time trying to define that really to this degree because it's not going to, that's not going to be a problem you're going to have, is what I'm suggesting. I mean, at your annual inspection, you could come in and say, oh, too many trailers, but I really don't think that's going to happen, so. I'd, I'd ask you not to overly concern yourselves with trying to define that at this time.
So what you're telling us is that you'd be okay with this, the RV then, classification in subject line two, rather than any?
Uh, no, I would like there to be no classifications. Restricting, however, I think you're going to find that you, you don't really need to have that restriction in there because it is not going to be a problem.
I, I, I would be okay with any.
We don't, we don't plan to, to store anything that is toxic in any way, that is immobile in any way, or that is going to create an issue. We have had a couple of people with their semi-trailers that, I mean, three, three people with semi-trailers that have wanted them there, and the majority of the other people are, are campers and boats and are, and, you know, those types of things.
I, I kind of think that the, everything around it's going to have a guidance anyway, so they can't leak fluids, they can't use commercial vehicles.
They technically can't get a semi-trailer in there, so there shouldn't be semi-trails.
I'm fine with just, with not necessarily limiting the vehicles.
Yes, John.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just kind of double-check my notes that I've heard. Going down the conditions, so I've marked down items that I think the council has a consensus on. Number two, when it refers to recreational vehicles, would just state, all vehicles must be currently licensed, operable, and readily movable? So it's essentially deleting everything except for the last sentence, is that kind of the direction that I'm hearing?
That sounds right to me.
You know, it's, it's probably nitpicky, but I've never understood why things have to be fully licensed if they're not on the road.
Well, part of that's to stop junkyards from developing all of a sudden.
And maybe that's the piece that stops the derelict trailers that are left forever that people are going to maintain a license on them. And this would require that they do.
It's just, I, I don't want to get in this situation where somebody's tabs expire, and it's January, and an inspection gets done, and oop, you know, but I get it.
That's an easy check every month for them to walk to and just check.
Okay, so I'm fine with that.
Item six is, there, there is to be no repair work on vehicles on-site or maintenance, and there's a question asked of the applicant if they plan to do any winterizing?
Yes.
We do not currently plan to do any winterizing. We did consider, we are considering offering shrink wrapping, I don't know if that falls under that category, I don't think it does, but no, we are not planning to offer that service.
Nope.
Okay. Then item seven, vehicle trips shall be limited to eight trips per day and must be in or out within 20 minutes, that, that item would be deleted?
I think it's strike.
I delete it.
Okay. Item fourteen, referring to the front fence, essentially deleting the, I'm gonna call it the middle sentence. Screening shall be installed with a minimum of fifty percent opacity year-round along the northeast property lines of storage area consisting of a fence six feet in height, period. Screening shall be completed by June first, 2024. So essentially, it's a long way of saying that the fence would stay as it is.
Just shorter.
Just shorter.
Just shorter.
Just shorter.
Six feet, yeah. And I, and I don't know how we decide the opacity, I don't...
We'll, we'll work with that.
Okay, yeah.
Item sixteen, referring to the number of years, the home exit business IEP shall be valid for a period of ten years from the effective date of the resolution, or shall expire when the business is relocated. So rather than five years, it would be ten years.
I like that.
Do we wanna add, or property is sold?
IUP will.
IUP, that's by definition.
And I believe that is the only note that I have for changes to the conditions.
The applicant, did you hear all that, does that sound good?
We did, that sounds good. I, I think I missed the last part about being sold, what did you say about it being...
The IUP, if you sell the property, the IUP would expire.
Oh, okay, thank you for that. No intention to sell, but thank you for letting us know. The fifty percent opacity, where are we with the material of the fence to be used? Did you guys have a recommendation of what you wanted to see? I know we've been around with several. We do have the material, which we found to be, you know, concurrent with the buildings and the design, which was a metal that we put up. Are we allowed to use that? Should we cut it shorter? If we can get it down to six feet, can we reuse that material for our screening, which is, you know, a greater opacity?
I don't, I don't know what was there, and, I mean, we can leave this up to you guys, but is this a condition of the IUP, or...
It was minimum set, minimum fifty percent.
I think the condition is the fifty percent opacity.
It, it does.
I'd say we leave it with the city, the staff.
But who decides what the final answer is? I mean, let's say the city wants X and they want Y, so...
It should be the council that makes this decision.
That's what I thought.
I was going to suggest that. Our metal fence is allowed in residential areas.
I don't know what that means, metal. I mean, we're not talking about barn siding, are we?
There's was a corrugated metal. It was a...
That's what was there.
And no, that is not allowed in residential.
It fits the, it fits the look of the buildings, as she says, so it's the same material, pretty much.
It is the same material, which is, you know, currently the exterior of all the buildings, so when we chose it and we put it up, it was to suit the property.
So is this painted or coated, or is it just galvanized?
That's what, so that's what I was gonna say, is it was not consistent, it was consistent with the type of material, however, the color was not, because it was just galvanized metal. It was not consistent with the color.
It's East Galvanized, it's dark gray.
Yep. It was not consistent with the color.
So it's not white, it's gray.
Yeah, gray or whatever you wanna call it, steel.
Yeah, would you like it painted? I mean, I don't think you would want white, that wouldn't look very good. We could do green, I mean, we could, could change the color pretty easily, but we would...
I, yeah, I just, I really hate to get into what we consider to be pretty versus anybody else.
Say it like an H.O.L., so much.
Yeah, but, so that would be a hundred percent opaque, right? I mean, you're not leaving slots, or you're not, yeah.
Yes, it's one hundred percent opaque. If you wanna consider the space underneath the fence, I think that comes into the calculation somewhere, so maybe we're at ninety percent, because there's a foot, you know, depending upon the elevation as it goes along. You know, there's space underneath it, but yes, it's a hundred percent screening.
David, what are your thoughts?
It's just, yeah, we would prefer that. I mean, it's preferable to us that you cannot see through it, and I think it's preferable to the clients with their things inside, and I think it's preferable to the neighbors, and, you know, the one neighbor already said that she would prefer that, and anybody driving by, I think it is more visually pleasing to see that than, you know, the storage that's going on beyond. And for security reasons was our biggest issue, that we wanted it that way.
So I drive this road regularly, and I would say it looks better with the siding that they had on there before than the way it looks right now. So I agree that having a cover definitely makes a big difference, but I don't wanna get...
Fairly successful in my career with lots of building projects in it by never picking colors. Just for reference, I don't have that authority at home either. So I, I don't wanna do that. I think the fifty percent opacity requirement is fine, and hopefully you make it look nice.
Okay, all right. I don't know what that...
So I'll make a, we have to motion this one? I'll make a motion for everything with all the changes John listed.
I'll second it.
Okay, any more discussion? Okay, all those are favorites, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, and we are on to item L. Nope, item K.
Hit right, hit right there.
Crosswalk policy.
Hit right there.
Oh.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Back on May ninth, Councilmember Trost had asked staff if there was any standards in place for crosswalks. We're gonna check what the weather is. If there's any crosswalk policies or standards within the city of Dayton. There is not currently any. Staff found upon researching crosswalk policies that the Minnesota Local Road Research Board did a study for the Minnesota Department of Transportation on crosswalks. The study was driven by the need to improve consistency in the methods and the approach that local agencies use to address crosswalks. The study focuses on the question of how a crosswalk should be enhanced, or how it should be enhanced with additional countermeasures, if any, once the decision is made to mark it. During the research portion of this project, it was found that the primary information agencies that provided guidance for decisions on how to mark crosswalks comes from the Federal Highway Administration. So the board, the Minnesota Local Board Research worked with the FHWA's guide to improving pedestrian safety in uncontrolled crossing locations. I did include in your packet a copy of that study. It listed the twelve different countermeasures, what they were, what they recommended for the types of crosswalks, the type of markings. I know it was a recommendation, it wasn't specifically stating that at this point, if they meet these factors, then the city will do this. Today, John and I went out and drove around the city and found that it's gonna take staff, I believe, more time to better understand exactly what the council wants to see in a crosswalk policy. We drove around today, and we found different crosswalks that have paved markings. Here's Balsam Lane and South Diamond Lake Road. It's going trail to trail. They have a marked crosswalk, which meets the recommendations in that study. That's a thirty miles an hour. Balsam is a collector's street, that, that meets the requirements to have that striked. Here, further down on Balsam Lane, we have a trail from the apartments going across Balsam to a private business, which, really, it should have maybe possibly gone through the median or something. It's thirty miles an hour, it is Balsam Lane again, but this is, you know, if you looked at that, and, because there is a crosswalk ramp right there, that it would be going to nowhere. Pioneer Parkway and River Hills Parkway, we have sidewalk to sidewalk, sidewalk to sidewalk, thirty miles an hour. It is just marked with, marked, paint markings. Again, here's River Hills Parkway, going to the trail that leads in between there, thirty miles an hour.
There isn't any kind of signage associated with those?
No, those were just marked.
But the one right down the hill from that does strike, it's a park, and that one's got a sign to it.
Right before here, there is one.
Yep.
They'll come in the other direction, which I do have in here.
Okay.
Robinson Street to Dayton Avenue downtown. Here we have the post office, there is a sidewalk over here, this is marked. However, on this side of the street, there is a sidewalk to a sidewalk across, and there is no markings.
I think we had to, Jason, may I remember this? We had to fight to get that one.
Oh, we had to fight.
Because it's county road.
Because it's county road, and they didn't see any warrants for a crosswalk.
And that's our other thing that we're running against. Crosswalk pavement markings and a crosswalk warning sign. We have that currently at, like, on Noon Drive and Dayton River Road. There's a warning sign. There is a, a crosswalk here, however, there's no sidewalk or trail, so... Thank you, thank you. Okay, so there's no, it's coming right off the grass to go across there. But it meets the recommendations of that study. It's forty miles an hour. It's marked with a sign and crosswalk paintings.
Where is this at?
Norwood.
That was Norwood. Here's Pine View and South Dayton Road, which is a multi-lane intersection. There is a crosswalk ahead sign coming this direction, it's forty miles an hour. Therefore, it meets those standards with two types of countermeasures.
Which road was forty mile an hour on Norwood and Dayton Road?
I think they're meaning South Diamond Lake Road.
Oh, sorry, this one?
That was Dayton River.
Both of them.
This is...
But that's a fifty mile an hour road.
Yeah. So is, are you saying Norwood was a forty mile an hour road?
Yes.
That can't be.
Norwood's thirty, right?
Norwood's a residential street.
I thought I...
It actually should be thirty.
Because we took a lot of pictures, I zoomed in on the sign.
This is where I live, and I'm like, wait a minute.
Well, how fast do you go?
This is, and this, it's coming down south, oh, sorry, Diamond Lake Road, sorry about that. And that is forty miles an hour there.
Yes, that one's right.
I drive that every day. Right. Crosswalk warning sign only. This is in, along Cheshire, Cheshire Way and Court. There's signs, it's thirty miles an hour through there, residential neighborhood. There's nothing marked besides a sign. We found several that are not marked at all with anything, whether it's, there's sidewalks, indicating, you know, people do cross from there, it's in a residential neighborhood. Here again, Pioneer Parkway and Dallas Lane, Division Street and Columbus Street. This is by St. John's Baptist Church. There's a trail that runs along this side of the property, and a lot of people walk down that trail to cross over to go to the church.
That's a county road, right?
Correct.
So that one's, my concern with the county road ones is, we can fight tooth and nail, and no matter how often Kevin comes and stands there and tells us, he's all about public safety, whether we want to just paint the road, he won't let us do it. And so, that, that, while I don't disagree that county roads should need them, I am also aware that they are kinda outside of our privy for our, unless we just want to do it, and then wait for them to come paint over it and have a thank you word, which, which we could do, I just... I hate to say this, but the county roads are gonna be tough for us to do much with unless we get the county of order.
So that's why, Steph, we just wanted to show, you know, the different roads, the different, the inconsistency, and this guide or this study is to bring more consistency to cities, so we'd really have to decide if, give staff more direction, do we wanna, out of this... I gotta see if I put it in this last one here, on the last page. That I put into the spreadsheet, and I apologize, I don't know if you have yours packets in front of you, where it says type of notification, and it has all the twelve different types. If, then, instead of best location, if that was required location. And we went through this, that, you know, on their recommendations, looked at our roads, that, okay, just an advanced stop here, signage for three or more lanes, speeds greater than thirty-five miles an hour, and inadequate visibility to pedestrians. You know, if we create, I know you want something that tells Public Works, or if we, in the future, have, when developments are built that are done, that they have to put in these markings, but I guess we just need a little bit more direction on, if you want us to come up with or bring back to you, you know, type of notification and have required locations, and if they meet this, this, and this, it's this type. If it meets this, this, and this, it's this.
So first, thank you for doing the work that you did. I, I appreciate it, and there's definitely a lot more types of notifications than I guess I was overall expecting, which I think isn't a bad thing. I think that we need to figure out how we wanna use them. I mean, I said it before, in my mind, if, if there's a built-in path or sidewalk that come together, should be at least painted, like, it just seems very simple to do that, as a, as a basic requirement. I think if it's so close to a park, or a church, or a public space, or a school, should probably have a sign, not lip, but just a sign, so we know. And if it's over a certain speed limit, at minimum, we should have the blinking lights like we do on, on Pine View. We just put that crossing the Pine View Meadows, or if I think the school has the blinking lights too. I think those make a lot of sense. I'm open to the rest of them, I read the advanced stop signage here, some of these look really good. I get worried about crosswalk lighting, I think it's great, but lighting's really expensive to put in, and so I, I don't know if, if we're at the point where we need to say, this always goes in here. Maybe we are, and I couldn't think of a situation where I'm like, it's, there's always gotta be lighting at, at this spot, and so maybe the schools, like, that was maybe the one thing I could think of, but, so I think some of these could be, in my mind, requirements. I, I didn't mind the way that they laid it out in the study, where it said, always consider, also consider, but I would add above that, like, always do, which is paint the road, or put this in. Like, some, I think there's some simple things we can do to help, help make moving around on foot or bike safer, and Minnesota's a very foot and bike community, and so I think we should embrace that. And we've got Prevers Park District, and a lot of places to go and see that way, so I think it's, it's worth digging into more. Those are my thoughts.
So you wanna fine-tune this, because of all that stuff, I mean, I zeroed in on the table, so, because, so you wanna...
Which table, the table they typed in?
The bottom, yeah, that guy.
Yeah, I tweeted that from that whole slide.
So you would just wanna tighten that or adjust it, or what, what are you asking for then? Because, I mean, it seems like that table's pretty good.
Yeah, I thought that those guidelines that the state had, you know, that it was more than I realized was out there. I guess my bad, but it gives us pretty good direction. You know, I would agree with you, Matt, where it's recommending lighting. You know, I, I don't think we should obligate ourselves to go retrofit places, but, you know, in areas that are newly developed, I think that, that, that makes sense, because there's gonna be street lighting anyway. So I, I think this is, you know, this is pretty good. I don't know, I'm not sure what fine, I mean, I'm, what fine tuning needs to happen to it. You know, I'm sure that even amongst some of the conditions that you showed us in the pictures, you know, we're gonna find things that are not practical. I don't know what you do with ADA requirements.
Yeah, it almost seems like everyone...
When you've got grass and grass, and now we're gonna be ADA between the, where there's no curbing. You know, so it's not, there's some places where this is, you could call it infeasible, I guess, you know, to apply, but certainly, we would wanna apply those things to any, anything that's created new. And then, you know, continue the inventory of where we, where we have them, or where we should have them, and then be consistent about what we do with them.
And, and yeah, I wouldn't spend more than ten seconds on any county road, because it will, just muddies up the water.
Well, we can send them our requirements, and they can ignore it like they do everything else.
No, I think it's, it's a great, it's a great starting point for us to start being more vigilant in that, so.
Inconsistent.
Inconsistent, yeah.
The other thing we have to look at is budget. How do we budget for it? Is it a five-year plan? Is it a, you know, to, to do the ones that we found, that we went... Is it a, you know, to, to do the ones that we found, that we went around the city, that are not marked or should be marked, you know, that's at the city's expense, because it's not in the developers' agreement now for any of the developments, that this is a requirement. Could go, going forward, make it a requirement, but.
How much are paint and signs? Marty's not here to ask, so I guess that's kinda the.
You know, like, there is these costs that are on the sheet, or Marty said those were pretty.
Paul, what are signs? 200, 300 bucks?
Yeah, Paul, I would guess most signs are around the $500 mark you could give her for a sign. It's incredible how much it's expensive, because I gotta be reflective, and that's gonna be all this.
It's gotta be specific material.
Yeah, correct. I would say you can average about 500 bucks. Some of them are more, some of them are less, but they're roughly 500 dollars.
Doesn't seem like a lot of money, though.
And we're talking about $1,000 roughly, give or take, but that's with staff time and everything else included, so we're talking.
Can we use the, any of the trails budget money for this, or is that not allowed?
Not allowed.
Yeah.
It'd have to come out of, like, street maintenance, or trail maintenance, or something along operational side of Marty's budget, unless we're looking at doing, like I said, some sort of larger lighting work, or something like that, where we're talking $50,000 for lighting and stuff, that could then come out of the trail money, because it's creating, you know, an official way of, you know, safe crossings, whatever, but.
Well, if we leave out the lighting requirement for existing, I mean, what I would suggest is that, you know, we inventory these and, and put an estimated cost around them, because I don't know if this is a $20,000 problem, or a $200,000 problem. You know, we're, if it's $20,000, we just say, go, and make it, make it work, and if we need, if it's bigger, then we need to phase it.
Yeah.
And, you know. We could do that as a staff duty.
I think if it was limited to city streets, it'd probably be well under that.
I would think so, too, yeah.
If we're talking about county stuff, it's gonna be significantly more, but.
Well, let's just worry about our stuff.
For now, I would worry about our streets. Not that we shouldn't talk to the county, and we should create a list of where we think the county should be doing these things, and we should officially send it to them, so they have it, and then they can send it back and say, no, but then.
We'll also have, moving forward with every new development, we have this now, in place, if it's past, then we have this in place that we can enforce moving forward.
So what are we, what are we approving this table, or, I mean, the policy was, I was kinda wondering.
The staff's recommendation, I think, would be to table it, give staff more direction to come back at another meeting with.
That sounds good, sure.
You know, that type of notification and the best location, or the required locations, more of a.
But you got a good idea of where we're at, though?
Yeah.
With all the different ways we can pave our crosswalks.
Make everyone different.
So I'll make a motion to table this item, then.
Second.
How long will staff need to bring it back?
Yeah, yeah, how long will it need?
John, do you have any ideas? I know I'd like to talk to Marty about it, too, he has a better.
Yes, I, more time than the next meeting.
Yes, definitely.
I can appreciate that. My guess is that even if we prove it next meeting, it still would get painted this year. Anything we're looking at's painted next year, but I think it would be nice to have something wrapped up before the end of the calendar year, to have something in front of us to vote on. Does that seem doable, or no?
I, I couldn't say, I, I guess, you know, my, my thought, just thinking out loud, is, you know, we can do an inventory, come up with a cost estimate, and then see how that fits in the CIP.
Cool.
So December? Whenever it's done.
I couldn't say without Marty being here.
That's fair.
TBD.
Well, we're probably not painting any roads in the winter anyway.
No, no, right. Whether it's, yeah.
Okay. Well, then, why don't we just not approve it, so.
You get to table it.
Okay, so I got a motion to table it, I need a second.
I thought you seconded it.
Yeah, I thought you seconded it.
I'll second it. I, I had a question mark after, if you didn't hear it.
No.
I did not, oh. No, that's fine. Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. It is tabled, can definitely. Okay.
Thank you.
Item L.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item L is.
Yeah, Mayor and members of council, this is the approval of a letter of support for the 2040 Transportation Plan Policy Amendment, being requested by I-94 Coalition. So, either the letter in front of you, you can read it for two minutes, but basically it just says that we'd like to have the Minnesota DOT relook at the current revenue scenario for the new approved expansion project on I-94, between Monticello, I forget my numbers right, Elverville and Monticello.
Didn't we already send a letter for this?
So that was supporting the funding of the project. This is to have them relook at the overall revenue scenario, apparently it's done based on how much lane miles and stuff there are done, so they can reallocate more transportation dollars towards this area of road.
This is like doubling down on the same thing we already approved.
Essentially, long-term, though.
Okay. All motion.
I'll second.
That's you. Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no, motion carries. Item M.
Yeah, so I just wanted to bring forth to council, I'd, I'd noticed that we don't have, and I know that this is timely, because Scott's out, so in all fairness to him, this is not an attack on Scott, and I was called in remotely, and I had missed a meeting before, so, just so everyone's on the same page, but that we have an attendance requirement for all committees and council, I think 75% makes sense, you should be required to make 75% of meetings.
I think we did have, I think we do.
I asked that, and he said no. I was surprised we did.
We don't have anything in code.
I think we do.
Isn't there, I think we do, too. Isn't there something about you can't miss consecutive?
Three in a row in your, yep.
I don't, I couldn't find anything.
Amy, you gonna go dig around the Z drive and find that policy?
I mean, three in a row.
I looked at the code, there was nothing in there, at least underneath Planning Commission, Park Commission, EDA Commission, all of the actual physical codes that say, here's the things you can do, you know, how many members, how many this, and how many that.
Let me see, do a little bit of research on this. I feel like there is something.
I've seen it.
Unless it was a policy thing that we had.
I feel like it's a, I feel like it's a policy and not an ordinance code.
There is a statute as far as elected bodies.
Doesn't say, I think.
But as far as.
Maybe that's what I'm thinking of.
Yep, and elected bodies, we can't override, we can't, we don't get a say in that. Commissions, we do.
You can be more strict, right?
What?
Than.
No, we can't affect elected officials. We can't put in statutes or.
Yeah, we can't do anything with elected officials, appointed ones or.
Yeah, the commissions, we can't.
I just don't want to feel like we're holding them to a higher standard than we hold ourselves, which is why I said all of us. I don't, I have never seen an issue appear with people missing a significant number, so I'm not worried about it, but I was just trying to be fair and equitable across everyone, I didn't want. But I think, I don't, 75%, being able to make 75% of meetings a year seems like a basic requirement. I don't see that being, it's, I mean, that's, you get to miss three out of 12 meetings. That doesn't seem like it's too hard to do.
Well, I'm questioning where I've, I've seen it, but I know I've seen that three meeting piece somewhere, and, which would be 75% for, I mean, 25%.
Well, I mean, we, we could certainly give direction to come up with something based on 75%.
Yeah, I'm okay with the number if you guys are.
Yeah, if you don't find anything.
I think I'm okay with 75.
If we don't find anything, except, it might have been a policy that was passed, which, again, I, I don't have policy, I looked in the codes and ordinances, I didn't look in policies, so, that may be where it's at.
Did you find one that said we also had to have a, what was it, a public safety commission?
Yes.
Oh, you did? So that's where I thought it was, and you're not, and you're not seeing it.
Public safety commission's listed in our ordinances and codes.
Okay.
So it's listed as a public safety commission.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, is it in the League of Minnesota City's Code of Conduct for council members?
I think that's where I saw it.
I think that's where it's in.
I remember it being part of my training as I onboarded.
Yeah, I just remember seeing this.
You got onboard training?
So that probably reflects what the state statute is for elected bodies. But as far as commissions go, I don't know if, I don't, I don't know if it talks about.
There is one, there is for Planning Commission members, too, a code of conduct, but I, I've only seen it for the city council.
So dig, and where it sounds like we're good with 75% if we can't find any. And then we can vote on that when it comes up, so.
Thank you.
Piece of cake.
And for, for what it's worth, for elected officials, it's 90 days. If you, if there's an absence for, for that period, then the council has the authority to declare a vacancy in that office.
Yep, okay.
And, and take action from there. So it's not really a percentage, it's a 90-day.
It's, yeah.
And that's just for elected officials. A lot of times, you know, when you create a policy for appointed officials, you do hold them to the same standard, or similar standard. And of course, then there are the rules related to remote appearances and things like that, where it's, you know, only very limited circumstances under the open door, that kind of group.
Yeah, I know, I think COVID caused everybody to really relax those, but I wonder when, at what point we pulled them back in.
Tightened the belt up again.
It was supposed to happen about a year ago.
Yeah, I thought so. I don't, yeah.
Still catching up.
Still, yeah. Okay. Sound good?